To be granted that from the commissioners. And if you actually go to our financial statement or income statement and balance sheet that I also provided, it kind of breaks down those numbers that I reported, the fifty-five thousand dollars in unrestricted donations. That's the fundraising that we've received. The grants, it reports only thirty-four hundred because that's the amount that we've actually used out of our grants. And so total operating revenue is the fifty-eight thousand so far used. It does show on the balance sheet that we do have eighteen thousand dollars in the restricted funds and that would be the grant funds. And if you go down below in the expenses, you could see that we've already spent thirteen thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars in client services. Those are specifically for lodging, transportation, relocation, counseling and things like that. It does not include salaries or anything like that. And then the general and admin, it would be, you know, that would be specifically our lease base, which is five fifty a month. And then and breakdown for utilities and education outreach. So we just wanted to be transparent with you where our finances are currently and where the monies are going and so forth. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
The other thing that we just really wanted you guys to understand is that often we get money and there is, it's tied to something. And the problem is, is often they don't think about advocacy, which is what Casey does. If she can't do it, we don't have a way to be there with with our victims and be their voice and be their support and all of the different things. And so a lot of the money that we receive goes to certain things and we can't use it as we need it. And so that's why it's so integral that we be able to use this money if you guys will grant it to us. So I just want to make sure we spoke to that because often people don't realize they're like, well, you're getting all this money. Why can't you just use that? But often they have it bookmarked for one thing and we can't use it. We can't use it for hotels if we need that. We can't use it for food. We can't use it for transportation or whatever thing, other things we have, especially the advocacy piece. Because people don't realize how many hours Casey spends at the hospital or with, you know, in court or all the different other activities that she has to do to be able to support these victims.
Well, I can tell you from personal experience with my daughter, the her advocate person for her felony domestic violence charge against her ex was that person has been with her all through paroles. And I mean, it's been eight years later and she's still the same person and still involved. I think what you guys do is wonderful, especially for the victims, not just getting them back on their feet, but the support in the courtroom and that advocacy. So I think this is great.
Thank you.
Long story short, basically how this works, because we have other folks that are asking for funds as well as we kind of get to the end. And we try and take care of our employees first and then we see what's left after that and try and be as fair and equitable as possible with everybody. So it might not be the full twenty, but we'll do the best we can with what we got.
We're always gonna ask. I'm like, I'd rather you say no than not ask, right?
Sasha, did you want anything?
Well, I'm an ambassador for them and so my involvement is being out in the community and fundraising and organizing and party planning and, you know, just touching people, getting donations and things like that and spreading the word. So it's, it's, I love doing what I'm doing. And I, the reason why I do it is because I'm a victim of both domestic violence and of sexual assault from a grandparent. So, you know, it's, it's near and dear to my heart. So I'm retired now, so I just throw everything at it that I have.
She's a huge asset, huge, huge asset.
Just a quick.
You for your work.
Are you looking for work, Sasha? You got some stuff here, I just wondered if you are. Okay, so that's kind of where we are. Hopefully we can help you guys. I know you're very successful in what you do and like I said, we'll see how much is left at the end and we'll go from there.
Perfect, we appreciate your time.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks guys, thank you.
So you need a break, Sheri?
Grabbing our microphones.
Hey, so Lindsay, come on up, you're next.
Guys, take care.
Thank you, have a great day. Good to see you again. So our next agenda item is an action item. This is the West Central Mountain Economic Development Council request for contribution for regional housing needs assessment. I'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you. Hope everybody's having a good day. I'm sure your brains are a little tired. Good afternoon, commissioners and staff. Thanks for your time today regarding our regional housing needs assessment. I think you're all familiar with who I am, Lindsay Harris, Executive Director of the West Central Mountains Economic Development Council. We're aiming to fundraise and successfully launch this project this year. In your packets was the draft request for proposal that will be submitted to various consultants who work in this arena. The role of the consultant will be, that will be hired will be to take inventory of current data that exists in the region and ongoing efforts that communities and counties have already been been doing. Use the data as appropriate and build further upon what is needed to complete a fully comprehensive regional housing needs assessment and path forward. The consultant's role will be to best deploy dollars and not replicate any data that doesn't need to be. The county has not updated your housing data since two thousand and five. And as we're all aware, the region has greatly changed since that time. The ARPA funding survey you put forth to your citizens indicated that housing was their top priority. We, what we come to you with a promising and economically efficient opportunity as leaders to represent those constituents and an option to meet their needs by contributing to this project. We have successfully received twenty thousand already from a private source in conjunction with their housing needs assessment requirement. We applied for the Laura Moore Cunningham Foundation grant this month as well as the City of McCall local option tax grant funding as well. I presented to both the lot commission and the city council last week. And we have received positive feedback that the lot commission was compelled by our application and reasoning for the assessment, which that evening of presentations was, I got some really hard hitting questions, but those questions prompted me to think further and bigger because I'm sure you all have the same, same concerns. And all we remain hopeful. In total, we're shooting to raise eighty thousand for this project, which I have been consulting with various regions and people who have done these assessments and eighty thousand seems to be a good figure for us to reach. That does not however account for my time, staff time and our organizational contributions to that. So of course we would love to raise a little bit more to offset the cost of of my immense time that will be spent on this. It is our understanding that there's ten thousand that remains in the line item of economic development in your budget. But we would propose the county contribute twenty thousand in total to it for the following reasons that I will outline below. And perhaps this is an opportunity to use some of that ARPA funding to put towards housing, which was one of those, one of the top priorities of your citizens. So why regional housing needs assessment? Why do we need this data if we already know we have a housing problem and what good does it do? It accomplishes a few major things I want to highlight. This will provide crucial data to incorporate into each of your communities that you represent and the county that can be used by everyone in their strategic planning. And in addition to the comp plan updates that you all plan to undertake. Data that will open doors for additional funding and grant opportunities without the data, we can't apply for those things. Most efficient use of funds and economies of scale. This makes it possible, instead of everyone doing their own thing and raising up the cost for everybody. This is a cost effective, low hanging fruit opportunity for you as leaders to work as a regional issue that was your top concern for taxpayer constituents and at a fraction of the price that it would cost you to do on your own. It makes the most sense, it is the largest beneficiary of the data as you represent the most people. The Valley County would be one of the larger financial contributors. We are trying to make this equitable for all of our communities and counties and your leadership will send a strong message to your citizens and community leaders that you are listening to them. This also, this plan would identify obstacles and impediments for the region such as how many units we need, what type of housing we need. Where's the best place to put this type of housing, density, zoning, infrastructure, all of those things that this assessment can help highlight. This will give us tools and give you tools as decision makers and for your planning and zoning committees in conjunction with your ongoing feasibility assessments, master transportation planning, all key data to help you make informed decisions and make strategic plans that actually would accommodate current and future needs. This is a key time to accomplish this assessment in conjunction with all the ongoing efforts and also pipe, you know, developments that are ongoing and also future developments that are currently in the pipeline. And it's cheaper for all of us to do it together. It's a win-win. We feel that in addition to each community's independent efforts, regionally working together is of great and understandable value. The reality is, like I told the City of McCall, they won't be able to solve the housing issue on their own, just like New Meadows won't be able to cascade Donley nor the county, that it's far greater than all of us. We believe it's imperative to all work together to utilize existing efforts that develops a regional strategy as our path forward. The reality is all of our communities and region are inextricably linked between housing and workforce. You're all small business owners or have been and you understand that. It's also an opportunity for all of us to come to the table in solidarity, to bravely acknowledge that this is important to us and that we're in it together and that we support one another. This also is not a radical idea. This has been successfully accomplished in similarly situated regions and proven to be highly effective, such as Gallatin County in Montana, Whitefish area in Montana, Okanagan County in Washington, to just name a few. Most recently, we were able to see it firsthand in Teton Valley, where Teton County Idaho and Teton Wyoming collectively did a regional housing needs assessment. So not only did they transcend state lines, but five or six communities and also two different counties. I was encouraged at our city council presentation last week in McCall where Mayor Giles specifically mentioned how that week in Teton County highlighted to him the importance of regional collaboration and shifting their mindset to think more regionally for solutions. In Teton County, they successfully created this assessment. And, you know, an example of how it's been beneficial is that, for example, there was a developer that approached the City of Driggs with a, with an opportunity that would target forty to eighty percent median income. Then Victor was approached, then they took on a project that would address the eighty to one twenty AMI for their city. So without this housing assessment, they wouldn't have been able to really know what the other two were doing or what buckets needed to be filled. This is our why for this project and for our grant or our funding ask. The Blaine County representatives that we went with were left in awe of this whole concept and it was very cathartic for those of us in the room from here to realize we're on the right track with what we're doing. We understand that your funds are spread thin and you have priorities that seem to require your utmost attention in any given moment. But housing is integral to all of this. We ask you consider these important aspects to see the benevolent value in working regionally on this important issue and to make a statement as leaders that you hear your taxpayer concerns, that you would be willing to build on the things you're, or the great things you're already doing. Take it one crucial step further and contribute funding to helping us get this done. Thanks so much for your time. What questions, concerns do you have?
That was really good, good job.
Thank you. I know that was a lot. I was looking at your faces and I'm like, oh, should I cut this short?
No, that's just my ugly face, that's just.
Okay, your resting commissioner face.
And I was looking at the, at the budget, you said we have about ten thousand left in there?
Yeah, so I thought in your line item, and Mr. Miller, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought it was a thirty-five thousand that you'd set aside for that ED economic development line item. And we are so grateful for your contribution to fund my position every year and I think that's twenty-five thousand. So that leaves you with ten in that budget.
The grant match is twenty-five. I think we have more in the economic development.
Yeah, and we raised from forty to fifty, no, sixty-five.
For this next year.
This next year.
For the upcoming year.
Contribution that Valley County made to the West Central Economic Development Council is twenty-five thousand. There was five thousand expended for the Idaho sled dog challenge. So there's a balance of twenty-five thousand left in that specific expense line.
So how soon will this study come together? You thinking this year or next year?
So we, um, we'll hear about the City of McCall Local Option Tax Commission. We asked for twenty from, from that fund. We also asked, I think, for twenty-five from the Laura Moore Cunningham Foundation. And I think those get announced in August.
You're doing Stibnite.
And the Stibnite Foundation.
What about Cascade?
They're on my list. I did, I met with them last month and introduced the concept. And obviously we've, through the asks and the why and the questions have been able to strengthen why this is important and try and help everyone understand what this assessment will accomplish and why, why it's crucial to your community. I do, I have heard anecdotally that city budgets are a little tight lately and a lot of people with their infrastructure updating and some other, you know, crucial infrastructure. So, but their city Cascade, I'm waiting to hear from Clerk Janice Van Winkle on getting on their agenda and asking as well.
And what about Donley Lot also?
Yes, so we have, from this, I guess, the, the rest of this year, there's a few thousand dollars that we're getting in addition that, you know, the bonus lot. So that'll go towards, we also have from the Community Foundation Fund that was originally established, there's sixteen hundred there as well. And then of course the twenty thousand. So I.
It'll take all of us together to make this.
Yeah, and I would really love at least to get the RFP out there so that in a perfect world, after the holidays, we could have the data in hand. So even with, I guess I've, I've been told that you can kind of pay as you go with a lot of these consultants. So if you're able to offer up half upfront or something, then as their workload, you know, it's congruent with what their workload is, that's what you pay. It becomes more of a payment structure instead of a bulk, bulk payment.
They asked M-Car for that too, didn't we?
I need to, yeah, separate. But Amber, I did go and meet with them. I just need to put in an application. It's kind of a more, it's less structured. There's not like a defined deadline for them. But yes, I would like to ask for about five thousand from M-Car.
Lindsay, how does it go from your assessment tool?
Yeah.
To a hole in the ground, starts pouring concrete.
Yeah.
That starts building a building.
Yep.
You know, how do you get from point A to point B, like within the next three months?
Like, wait a second.
Put you a little bit on the.
Do you want me to help you with that one?
Well, I do think, you know, developers will come to us or they will look to someone that understands the market and understands the obstacles and, and entry points. And it could become a really effective tool for them to help define what kind of development they want to do. And I guess in that sense, and a lot of the times they need the market research as well. And so given, I don't know, it depends on the timeframe, but this could be their market research, so.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're needing because I mean, we're in crisis mode here and you, you know that.
Yeah.
And so that's what we're looking at, you know, I see these guys down in New Meadows building four fourplexes and I don't think those are going to be, what would you call, affordable.
Yeah, those are going to be market rate.
Yeah, it's going to be market rate, which, you know, we're needing affordable real bad up here in this county.
Right.
And didn't know how this is a tool that would really work. I guess that's what I'm looking for, something that.
Well, there is.
Put boots on the ground working.
No, I appreciate that question. It does, so with multifamily housing efforts, there is kind of this, it's not a new concept, but within that development, there's mixed, you know, median income, you know, it's, I call it like a patchwork, a quilt. So depending on what kind of funding and what AMI they have to hit with that funding, it can really offer market rate. It can mixed, mixed AMI so that, you know, forty to eighty, eighty to one twenty and then full market rate. Is, is what is like Jackson is, you know, successfully implemented that in Jackson Hole. In fact, that's the only type of housing that they do because single family homes, you know, are obviously not as cost effective.
Yeah.
Yeah. But no, that's a great, units need to be built. That's the bottom line and that's the only answer is getting units built. But the data is the crucial starting point to build, build off of, to understand what we're dealing with and where, if that makes sense.
Oh, it does. Yeah, you just, you sit back and you watch it and you hear all the stuff all the time.
I know.
Okay, when you start digging a hole.
I know, or like listening to, you know, there's critical infrastructure updates happening, you know, like Pale Lake Sewer District, you know, the, the call last week where they came forth with their, you know, their plan and what it's going to cost. And, you know, all these things that go into, it's not just getting something built. It's all the implements needed to even be able to build to start.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, can I ask a question to Ms. Harris?
Absolutely.
Are you going to be having the economic summit? And are you going to be requesting funding from the county for the summit as well?
Um, in the past, you all have contributed each year, right, to that? And I don't, I don't know what the, is it five thousand that you've?
I think it was.
Yeah, contributed in.
So that'll be under the next budget year because that summit this year.
It's November.
November instead of October.
That's the one we did at Shore Lodge.
Yeah, we're trying to do it, we'd love to do it down here.
And housing.
And actually there, it was twenty-five hundred in fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
But I just wanted to get clarification.
Yes.
That's the only thing that's going through my head is what else is going to come between now and the end of this fiscal year? And I think we're good.
Yeah.
Doug says we got twenty-five thousand in there, correct?
Does that twenty-five include the ten that was not requested for the ED Pro?
The ED Pro grant is funded out of a different expense line.
Last year during budget, I'd asked thirty-five to be put into that.
And that's what we put in there is thirty-five thousand in that expense line.
And we've only requested twenty-five.
Correct.
So there's ten on that expense line.
That is correct, the.
And then there's still twenty-five on the other expense line?
Correct.
So there's a total of thirty-five. So I would, I, I told Lindsay, we need to ask for the ten for the position.
I think we were waiting to clarify, so that's good to know.
And maybe we should do twenty out of the other one and leave five there, just in case there is something that comes up between now and then.
Works for me. Works for me.
And this is a tool for Sinda also, she's got development comes in, she just hands them the housing needs assessment and says, this is what we need. Now, this also empowers conversations with Perpetua, who also needs, you know, is still contributing to the housing conversation. I mean, anything that comes in, this is a tool, you hand to them and say, we need fifteen hundred units.
Or fire districts.
And fire districts. We know, yeah, they'll be a part of that conversation.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, and I think this is the big thing on this is we're going to have the data for grants.
Hundred percent.
That's the big issue, getting those grants for this kind of stuff and you gotta have that data.
And also there's something about some shock value that can really, you know, and we really know how many units we need or lacking and what future units we're going to need. I think it will become more tangible for people in positions that can help.
And it's interesting, but if you talk to the Federal Reserve who deals with housing, I asked them specifically what price points are people building at? And she said, take the price points off of it. You need all housing, period. You need to put up building because it drives the entire economy and allows more affordable housing in a community.
Absolutely.
So it was interesting to have that, you know, from the economists from the Federal Reserve just told me that two weeks ago.
And I've been doing more research because of my, so my Department of Commerce grant applications due this week for my position. No, no pressure. And I, I have been obviously researching a lot of data on current market trends and workforce and wages and all of that. And I'm happy to share some of those findings when I get that done. But I think you'll be pretty, it'll be interesting for you as well to understand who's living here and, and who we are.
So do you need a letter of support this week?
Thank you for reminding me of that, yes. So that the cash match letter was also in your packet, thank you. The Department of Commerce graciously enclosed for all of us. It's just a standard letter that you're pledging X amount towards cash match for, for my position.
Did not get that on the agenda?
Usually the way that works is you write the letter and then we approve it.
Okay.
And here, put it on county letterhead. I'm going to see if that's in.
In our packet, Doug, did you guys get that?
Where was that?
I didn't see anything in here.
I thought I attached a draft letter template. And I apologize.
There's one lack of workforce housing?
There was the RFP draft and then there should have been, there should have been the draft template cash match letter from Department of Commerce.
It's in your, it's in your deal and it's some H and W of something final.
It's in your, it's in your deal and it's some H and W of something final. Hmm, I don't know if that's it, Commissioner. Yeah, well, oh, nope, that's not it, that's wrong. Where was it? Where'd it go? It just left. Grant narrative.
No, that's not it.
Right there.
That's not it either?
Yep.
Talks about the Western Mountain.
Development professional grant match letter.
Yes, yep.
Where was it?
It's in our packet. Can we include that, Doug?
I, I think you'd be okay to do that.
Okay, since we are discussing that. So as the action item then, so first of all, the ten thousand is there, Lindsay, so you guys need to get that out of there.
Aye.
And then I would move that we approve a twenty thousand dollar contribution for the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And I would also move that we approve, well, let's, let's separate those two things.
Is this the one?
Yes. And I will doctor this and get it ready for signatures.
Okay, would you state your, I'm sorry, what, your motion again?
That we contribute twenty-eight thousand dollars to the Regional Housing Needs Assessment.
A second? Okay. And that's gonna come from the ED program, right?
No, it's gonna come from.
Economic Development.
Economic.
I mean, I can, dear God, I'm losing my marbles.
It's the overall economic development.
Overall.
Okay, yeah.
Zero, 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 one dash twelve. Okay, so we got a motion and a second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Now, do you want to talk about the other one?
And I would move that we approve the catchma- cash match letter for twenty-five thousand dollars for the ED Pro grant.
You said twenty thousand.
That's the Housing Needs Assessment. The cash match for the ED Pro is twenty-five.
Okay. Second. So can we print that out today and sign it and do all that?
Um, and do you want me to go do it real quick, or you want?
If you have the ability to, that'd be great.
Yep.
Have we got a motion and a second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
If you could email that to me after it's finalized, we can print it on Commissioner Letterhead.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thanks, we appreciate you too, Lindsay. Okay. We got all that right? Next agenda item is not an action item, this is Valley County Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee status. You need.
One moment.
Sure. Hang on, Garrett, we're not quite ready up here yet.
I'm sorry, Steve. How do you, the other day?
We just, we just sat there and watched, and it's like, oh, really?
No, I keep on screaming at me, I try and not take it personal too, but it's a little hard sometimes.
Weska? I like the wonder.
Did we have?
I am here.
Hey, fantastic, thank you so much.
Hello, Anzlon, hello, Ann.
Hello, Commissioner.
Okay, so I'll turn this over to Garrett and we'll go from there.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for having us. Um, we were just hoping to, um, just give you an update on the Impact Fee Advisory Committee, where we're at, where we're headed. I think all of this information has been given to Mr. Oki through Mr. Giggrey. So it shouldn't be new information for him, but just to outline the process. Uh, our last DIFAC meeting, Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee meeting for the Valley County group was on May ninth, and they voted to approve the capital improvement plans of the three fire districts. And basically giving their recommendation to the county commissioners to move forward with this process. So if you go to the packet of information I just gave you, it's, uh, the Fire District Impact Fee Study and Adoption Process. Um, this was put together by Mr. Giggrey, just to kind of outline, um, all of the different steps. We're basically at step number eight on page three, which would be a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission to update the comprehensive plan to include the, um, impact fee studies and capital improvement plans for the three fire districts into that comprehensive plan. Um, everything else up to that point, I believe, has been done. And then it would go to the county commissioners and public hearing process.
During, during that meeting, did you guys discuss, I mean, my, my, this is my concern. After looking at the results the other day from the fire, we had just given all you guys money. And I wondered how that factored into that vote. And so have you guys talked at all about if we do this new EMS district, how that may impact this? And what is that balance, or would people be unwilling to vote on a new district, you know, there's an impact fee?
Great question, yeah. We did talk about it quite a bit with the advisory committee, and I think that overall, we felt like just keeping this process moving forward would be beneficial if and when, uh, EMS district is formed, that, that district would have the opportunity to go collect impact fees for like ambulances. And we can convene the Impact Fee Advisory Committee, Committees for the cities in the county at any time. And we can update the capital improvement plan for the fire districts. We could, you know, reduce it, increase it for the ambulance. Like, we can sort all that out at the advisory committee meeting level to bring to the county commissioners. And maybe have to update the comprehensive plan again for an ambulance district or reduce it for the fire districts. I think it's easier to dice all that once, um, this is kind of set in motion, if that makes sense.
Because I could see the impact, or the ambulance district needing to save for the ambulances.
Right.
So then this would just empower you guys to buy infrastructure for the fire department.
Correct.
Buildings and your equipment for the fire.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I just wondered how, if you guys had had that conversation and how you felt that was gonna impact.
We did, and just under the current model, it works. So I think once the model changes, or we have an EMS district and we figure that out differently, then we can, I think it's easier at that point to bring those changes in front of the advisory committees, the cities and the county and make those updates than to, like, basically start from square one or wait until there's a different model. I mean, if, if we don't do anything with the new district and it, it's twenty-four before that passes or twenty-five, we're just delaying everything.
Well, and you can request less of a levy if you have another funding model there. Oh, this could actually help buy the equipment and the levy could pay for salaries, so you may not have to go for it.
Sure, yeah.
Garrett, refresh me again, we're at the, we're at step number eight, and so you guys are gonna put petition or application to the planning and zoning?
No, we're at step like one.
Huh?
No, eight is the very last one.
From the last one to number eight?
But no, number eight's way out. I mean, they're not close to number eight yet.
Yeah, we are. So number six is, like, we've already, we have the advisory committee's recommendation. The Fire District Commissioners have reviewed the plans and adopted them by resolution. The, the number six draft of the intergovernmental agreement and ordinance, that's been done. Uh, Oki has a copy of that draft.
Have you done the cities yet, Garrett?
Yeah.
Number five? So you've got all the city stuff too?
No, so Cascade has gone through the city process. We are, in McCall, we're slated for the first week of June to be at the Planning and Zoning Commission to update the comprehensive plan. And then it will go to the City Council for public hearing and ordinance. Um, but at the county level, uh, the legal documents, the intergovern- uh, intergovernmental agreement, the ordinance and amendment to the comprehensive, comprehensive plan have been, um, given to Brian. So I think that the next step, and, and Mr. Oki could chime in when he looks at this. I think the next step is getting on the docket for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is this receives a question, City Council Commissioners or application of the fire district? So you guys are doing that process?
Well, that would be, the, basically, I think, and Ann can jump in if I'm misspeaking. Because we're talking about this at the county level, the DIFAC Committee is the county's Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee, recommending to the Board of County Commissioners that the Board of County Commissioners would request that Planning and Zoning look at this to update the comprehensive plan.
So, Ann, are you still on?
Yes, sir.
Are we, are we setting this upright? I guess the next step is on, in, in our lap to get this to our planning and zoning?
Yes, sir, um, that, I think we're all at the same place with the cities and the county now, having met with all of the separate advisory committees. So all of them are going on, except for Cascade, which is already done, but going on to the planning and zoning and then to, um, a hearing on the fee.
So Oak's got the intergovernmental agreements, and he's drafting the ordinance?
Mr. Giggrey drafted the ordinance and gave it to Mr. Oki to review, yeah.
Well, I guess the next step then is to put those documents together, get them to planning and zoning, and as soon as they can set a hearing date, and it's gotta be publicized too, to amend the comp plan. Um, I wonder, Cinda should be in here.
Want us to grab her?
Um, yeah, if you don't mind, or I could call her here in just a second. Steve, go get her.
Knowing that we're this far along, what work has been done with either the, I don't know if it's Clerk's Office, Building Department, you know, how are we gonna structure this within the county to accept these fees and collect them? And you guys are requesting that the county collect them, I'm assuming?
Well, I think that's.
They're gonna be collecting.
That's kind of part of planning and zoning's function, how she's gonna do that. Um, Cinda, we're kind of at the point on the impact fees for the fire departments where it's gotta go in front of planning and zoning. And they're gonna get you the documentation. You would have to set it on the agenda for planning and zoning for a public hearing. And then I'm guessing we also have to publicize this for a notice for amending the comp plan. Do you do that, or who does that?
Who would do that as part of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Okay.
Um, I believe that we already have, that may be, already be in the comprehensive plan. I'll have to look. But we would have to notice the public hearing portion with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the next one would be July, second, Thursday, July. There's an ordinance too that Oki has right now for review. There's a comp plan and an ordinance. You have to bring an ordinance forward too. The ordinance is gonna be repacked by the P and Z also?
We're gonna say an amendment to the comprehensive plan.
They normally start review?
Well, how do you amend the comp plan? Through ordinance?
I need to look at the comprehensive plan. It might, we do the capital improvement program.
If I, I'm sorry, Cinda.
And I know that they have specific language that they want us to insert in there. So if that's on the agenda in July, um, is Ann, oh, Ann's on the thing. And she can get us the specific language that needs to be included.
Okay, okay.
And we can hold our public hearing in July.
I believe the attorney's already provided that and will make sure that it gets to you. Um, and it, it only is the, the, the resolution or the recommendation to the county commission to amend the comp plan, basically saying the things they plan to build or buy and their approach is consistent with your long-term growth plan. The ordinance goes to the county commission and the intergovernmental. The P and Z doesn't have to review those pieces.
And then we set a, a hearing date for amending the comp plan to include, we agree with planning and zoning, say, yes, we want to do this, put it in the comp plan, and we're done. Is that correct?
Um, the, usually the same time that you consider planning and zoning's recommendation, you'll also hold a hearing on the actual fee, just like you do for any other fee. And all of those notices, um, uh, the fire district's attorney will provide the notice language for all of those to Mr. Oki.
I, I can see something where you do the comprehensive plan, the ordinance and the fee, all in the same meeting, just in that order.
Correct, absolutely, yes.
And that's, I'm assuming after planning and zoning's had it in July, so we're looking at, what, end of July or August sometime?
We're looking at the end of August.
End of August, okay.
It has to be the P and Z, and then we have to renotice for the Board of County Commissioners. And so it's gonna be mid-August before that's done.
And then we have another public hearing, number two, for all parties. And then what do we do?
There are only two hearings. There's one hearing at Planning and Zoning, a recommendation to amend the comp plan, and then you take action on their recommendation with no additional hearing. The second hearing is in front of you and it's simply about the adoption of the fees. So there's one hearing at P and Z, one hearing at the Board of County Commissioners.
I see. And then we approve a resolution of the amendment and everything is adopted then, and then what happens?
Uh, as Commissioner Mopin said, that meeting that the county commissioners had, you would approve the P and Z recommendation. You would hold the hearing on the fee ordinance. You would adopt, if you choose to, the fee ordinance. And then you would also approve the execution of the intergovernmental agreement as approved by your attorney with each of the three districts. That intergovernmental agreement sets forth the process for collecting, uh, the fees. Uh, it indemnifies the county for the, um, responsibility of managing the fees. It identifies how much each district will pay the county for collecting the fees. All of that is set forth in the intergovernmental agreement. And I think that the chiefs can share that with your clerk, with Cinda, with the Building Department to make sure that there's a system in place that works for them.
And I'm assuming you have some idea how that system is gonna work with the Building Department?
Yeah, we, we have six or seven counties that are collecting for fire districts right now in Idaho, so we can, um, we can touch base with some of those. Or, um, usually the Building Department, whomever is taking the, um, building permits has a, has a way to, you know, flag this as they go through the, um, permit process.
And those other committee, or other communities that are currently collecting, do they collect on the county's behalf also or just the fire department?
Uh, let's see, Cootney County's collecting for the fire districts only because they're still working on their own. Gem County collects their own and for fire. Uh, Ada County collects for fire, they're still talking about their own. Canyon County collects for fire. Uh, Elmore County collects for fire and they collect their own. Teton County collects for fire and they collect their own. And I'm missing some, but I, and I, I can't think of what they are right now.
There are some that would be a model that will be exactly what we would need.
Okay. Well, I guess the next step then is to get the information to planning and zoning and go from there, correct?
We'll get on the July agenda.
Okay. We all good?
We have draft notices and all that stuff.
Okay, thanks for coming in, Cinda. Um, holy schmoly. I'm really impressed you guys got your committee together so fast. That's really awesome to get the, the FAC committee all together and, and I thought that would take two months, but you just jumped right on.
What's up?
You got the county one too, thanks.
Yeah.
County White ones, already met too.
Yeah, and Kirby Robertson's the chair of that committee.
Good, good. Hey, any other questions for Garrett or Steve or Juan?
Good, so thanks for the updates. We know where we are. I didn't think it was this far along, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure guys, what was your hopeful target date to start collection? Maybe the first of our.
June first.
Next week.
We'll be delayed a couple more.
Next week.
Night. Maybe October first with our new calendar year. Um, and the reason I'm asking is that we will have to put something in the budget if we're gonna charge to collect these on your behalf. We gotta have something in our budget line, I don't think, to do that. Um, and the reason I'm asking is that we will have to put something in the budget if we're going to charge to collect these on your behalf. We got to have something in our budget line item to do that.
Well, I was thinking whatever they charge, we'll just keep, but maybe we don't want to do it that way, huh?
We've been on one today. There's something in the water today.
Um, do you guys have any idea what counties charge to collect your fee? Ann, are you still on? She's gone. Well, that's something we can look into to see, but I don't.
I've talked to her about it in the past, yeah. There's, I mean, it follows like the fee schedule structure in Idaho, so you need to figure out what that burden costs. It's usually like a fixed amount, like five dollars per transaction. It isn't a percentage. You just figure out how much staff time it takes and then divide it up and say that takes an additional whatever, hour.
And then what do we do? We take that check, Doug, and you deposit it into a trust to figure out which district you manage?
I'll, we'll have to look. They might, uh, be dispersed during their, um, tax remittance payments. Um, but I'll just need to check with the other counties to see when those impact fee dispersments are being made. I would anticipate they would come with your tax remittance, but I don't know. So we'll need to research.
I think they're monthly or quarterly. Yeah, and then we have to set up a, each district would have to set up a trust for,
To hold those.
To hold that dollar, those dollars, yeah.
I think our biggest thing is how much time this is going to take. So in which department, we're going to have to add staff. So that needs to be part of our budgeting thought processes, you know?
Really can't anticipate this is going to take a significant amount of time, but we'll.
And it's a flat amount per permit or square foot. So from what I understand, it's, it's not a, you know, it's not.
So it's for each, let me just wrap my mind around it. It's for each building permit that is issued, new improvement, correct?
Yeah.
New construction?
As a dwelling unit. As a dwelling.
Only on dwellings, not garages, not commercial, right?
Dwelling units only and commercial.
Guessing that we'll have some kind of a form at the billing department that makes sure all this was checked off before you issued that billing permit.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. Think we can make it work?
Yeah.
All right.
And I know there's, I know, I, talking to Ann, there's counties and cities that don't collect a fee on the transaction and there's some that do. I think it's kind of all over the board.
Well, we're kind of all over the board anymore, so.
I know Giggrey's been talking about the city of McCall and the city of McCall asked him. Giggrey said that he didn't have, he didn't represent any fire district that was charged by a city for impact fee collection.
So if the building permit is issued within the city limits, they would collect the fee. That's correct. And that's the same for all of the other cities. These are only for buildings that are, um, building permits that are issued within the county, correct?
Yep.
And billing department has, I'm sure, a GIS map that says, hey, this house is in this district. Should be easily found, so.
Yes.
Sounds like we're on a horse going full bore.
Yeah.
Hey. All right, Juan, you've been really quiet. I'm concerned. You swallow a frog or something?
He's letting me in. He's thinking about fishing.
No.
No? You're all good?
I'm all good.
Steve?
Yeah, good.
Okay, thanks, guys.
See you guys in June. We'll have a discussion with EM stuffs.
Okay, are we going to do any budget work with Juan on the EM stuff?
I'm still waiting on the numbers from, uh, from Ema on what my wage will be for the next year. So once I get those, I'll do like I've done it.
That'd be great.
And then come back.
That'd be great.
Yeah, let us know as soon as you do. We're getting close.
As I get him, that same day, I email that to Doug, so.
All right, thanks, guys. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, El, did you get this email from Jeff?
Um, I haven't looked at my emails.
Yes.
He missed, he missed nineteen thousand dollars. All over it. Thank you. It's been paid. You already got it?
Well, that's fine. Thank you.
Diamond fuel. That's funny. Got it all taken care of, so I'm leaving now.
We figured that since you guys saw it, you probably would want us to work on it, so we processed it. And we attempted to hand deliver it and their office was closed. We will attempt to, uh, hand deliver it again tomorrow.
And I just got an email from Central District Health. They got a five hundred thousand dollar grant to bump up the WIC program. So they're going to be doing more WIC up here. That's really cool.
Is this like for the Fair Board, people, just a generic form, reinsurance?
Yeah, that's anybody that is going to have an event down there at the Fair Board needs to sell that out and return it along with their insurance certificate. I think it's, I think it's fine for what we need. Scott wants more stuff on there, but.
So you guys want to do the executive now? I wonder if Pat can do it.
I think it's Scott. Yeah, he wants to add more detail on that, exactly what they're doing at the event. Not, you know, a non-refundable, I, that's our call. That's, you know.
Yeah, that's.
Be a policy. That's our call each and every time.
It should be. I mean, he's right, you know, somebody can walk off and they have in the past and leave a mess. Somebody's got to pay for it.
We're doing Scott, aren't we?
Yeah, Pat's on the turn of the phone. But why don't you mute us until we figure out what we're doing this last executive session?